Steve is Steve Kelch. I'll see you next week, Rick. Okay. Yeah, ninety-three or something like that. It was high nineties, yeah. Okay, is everyone ready? Okay. Where are we here? I'd like to call the Monday, December ten, two thousand eighteen Oakwood City Council meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me with the pledge of the flag?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
May I have a roll call, please, Lori?
Mayor Duncan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Byington.
Here.
Mr. Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Hilton.
Here.
Mr. Epley.
Here.
And may I have a report on our minutes of our November five regular session, work session, and executive session, and our November nineteen work session, Councilmember Hilton.
Yes, Your Honor, I've reviewed the minutes from all four of those meetings, and I've found them to be correct and complete, and therefore I move that they be adopted as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 Thank you, so ordered. Under status reports, we have a neat status report tonight. Like to recognize Skip and Martha Ordeman, who have served as the co-chairs of our Friends of Smith Gardens organization for twelve years, from two thousand and seven through two thousand and eighteen. They've helped raise nearly two hundred and forty thousand dollars for the gardens during that time period. In recognition of their lengthy volunteer service in promoting Smith Gardens and leading the annual garden fundraiser, the city is going to place a brick paver at Smith Gardens in your honor. The paver will read, "In honor of Skip and Martha Ordeman, Friends of Smith Gardens, Membership Co-Chairs, two thousand and seven to two thousand and eighteen." In addition to serving on Smith Gardens and personally addressing and thanking all the people that have made gifts to the gardens, Skip also serves as a member of our Budget Review Committee. The Budget Review Committee, he has been a member for seventeen years and counting. We keep track of people's attendance, and Skip's attendance rate is between ninety-three and ninety-four percent during that entire period of time. It's a higher percentage than all but one member, and that member we just appointed, and she's only been to three meetings. So, here in attendance with Skip is his family. We have his son, Rick Ordeman, in the back, and his wife, Constance, how are you, daughter, Linda Miller, and daughter Jan Campbell in the front, and daughter, I'm sorry, where is Jan? There, she is in the back, and then daughter Nancy Downey and her husband, John. So, Skip, congratulations, and we'd like for you to come up and address City Council, and this is your chance to tell us what we're doing wrong. I'm sorry? Ah, the brick, perfect, yes, I'd love to do that.
Is this the right spot?
That's the right spot.
Perfect. Well. Oh. Paper. Wow.
That's what it looks like.
Thank you.
You want to turn around here and take, get a picture? Yeah, come on up here, Martha. We'll put the thorn between two roses, come over here to my side. Well, thank you. You got it? Okay. You got it, Constance?
Because it's getting heavy.
Yes.
I was gonna say, Mayor needs to work out more.
You have a method of that as well.
Oh, thank you. That one's much lighter.
Oh, yes.
You can carry that.
Yeah, well, Martha and I both want to thank the council and all of the people and the staff, particularly Carol, who's done such a great job over the years of preserving the beauty of Smith Gardens and even enhancing it. When we first moved here fifty-five years ago, Mr. Smith could be seen out in the garden with a helper, working, inspiring other gardeners to do the same, and Carol's carried on his tradition in great style. The house we bought was only two blocks of Smith Gardens, so we've been there, up to the park, up to the gardens, many times, and we found, many in our family found, that after a large family gathering and a big dinner, two blocks was just the right distance to walk off a meal and then go home and have a nap. One time, one of our granddaughters fell in the pond in the middle of winter, but there was no damage, except that the arguments pervaded in the family for many years as to who was at fault, how that could have happened. And then, our daughter Nancy married John Downey in Smith Gardens, and Nancy is a, so happens, is a classmate of Steve Kelch, so we know he's a good, reliable fellow. So, I think we feel the gardens are in very good hands with Carol and Steve, and we're pleased to have had the opportunity to do a little bit to help it along the way, and now we'll let Steve write the letters, and we'll have more time to visit the park. So, thank you all again.
Thank you, Skip.
Thanks.
Also, here in attendance tonight is, in fact, Steve Kelch, who is not only going to be our co-chair, but he also is the grandson of Carlton Smith. Steve, would you like to address council and tell people what you have planned?
Welcome you all here, especially the Ordeman family and Skip and Martha. I know that my grandparents are looking down on us tonight with a lot of pride and gratitude for Carol, all her associates, the fine city of Oakwood, all the chair people that preceded me, especially these two fine, fine people, and I just thank you, and I'm honored to be given this opportunity to help the garden keep the legacy alive. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. And Carol, refresh my, this is the what anniversary of Smith Gardens? It's the forty-fifth anniversary of the gift that Carlton Smith and his family gave to the city, and at our last Budget Review Committee, which was one of maybe two that Skip had to miss, only because there was an ice storm that night, Carol relayed that as part of the original gift, the home that used to be the Smith home was also donated to the city with the proviso that the home be sold and the proceeds be put in an endowment fund at the Dayton Foundation. And Carol relayed to the Budget Review Committee that the home was sold forty-five years ago or so for one hundred and eleven thousand dollars, and it just recently resold for one point one million dollars. So, that fund still exists, and we get some income off of that, not the principal, but people are making donations to our Smith Gardens Fund that we have with the city, and that has in slightly over four hundred thousand dollars in it, I believe, over and above what we have with the Dayton Foundation. So, I think, obviously, we encourage people to donate to Smith Gardens. It's truly one of the gems of Oakwood, but not just Oakwood, one of the gems in the entire country. It's been recognized as one of the best local gardens in the entire country, I believe. And we, obviously, Carol was excited about this because she indicated that she was hired originally by the city to maintain Smith Gardens, and it's been in good hands for forty-five years. Very good. That concludes our status reports tonight, but we do have a special visitor who would like to address council, and this is Laney Teeters, who is an Oakwood High School senior, and she wants to talk about a project that she's involved with, with the Oakwood schools. Welcome, Laney.
Hi, I'm a senior at Oakwood High School, and I'm a part of a club called Bowls, and that stands for Building Our Lives Drug-Free, and every year, we do a little bit more to try and get our community involved, and we have our parent banner, which parents sign to support our message, and we also have other community members sign it, and then in January, we have a student banner that kids will sign, sign to pledge in stay drug and alcohol free. And on December eighteenth, we're having a community speaker, and it's going to be the sheriff, and he will talk about the trends in teenage substance abuse, and that is for parents of Oakwood community members and also of other South Suburban Coalition Schools. So, he will be in at six o'clock on the September eighteenth, and then also for the Drug-In, National Drug and Alcohol Facts Week, we'll have a speaker come in and talk to all the students at the Oakwood Junior High and High School about the risks of using drugs and alcohols at a young age.
Very good. Does anyone have any questions for Laney? All right, well, I know that she came to our council meeting earlier today, and all five members of City Council were excited to sign this item here for the pledge, and so you've got five council members on there. I know there's some school board members, a lot of parents and other community leaders, so not a lot of room left on there, but if any of you are in the audience and would like to sign it, you know, I'm sure she brought her Sharpie with her, so, and I also talked with her, I asked her if she had decided where she's going to go to college next year, and she says she hopes to find out this week, but it's between Notre Dame, Ohio State, and Vanderbilt, so how about that? Laney, congratulations, we really appreciate your efforts on this. This is clearly a topic, and you'll really enjoy Sheriff Plummer and his chief jeopardy Shrek, Streck, I'm sorry, they came to an Oakwood Council meeting here a little over a year ago at the height of the opioid epidemic in Montgomery County and put on an excellent presentation, so I would encourage, I would encourage the parents that are watching this tonight to come to this because it will be a very eye-opening experience for them. So, thanks again for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other visitors at this time that would like to address council? This would be your time to come down to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and we would welcome you. All right, we will then go ahead and close the visitor section of our meeting, and we'll go straight to legislation. We have quite a few pieces of legislation this evening. Vice Mayor Byington has an ordinance that he would like to start with, so Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes, Your Honor, this is an ordinance to amend existing Section seventeen eight-hundred point three, which is a supplementation of information filed with the county auditor pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section fifty-three twenty-three of the Oakwood Property and Maintenance Code, and that is to expand and clarify requirements for tenant information forms. This is the second reading of an ordinance that we introduced at our November fifth council meeting. It is an ordinance to clarify what information must be provided to the city on a tenant information form and the timeframe for submitting that form. Under our Property Maintenance Code, Oakwood landlords are required to provide a tenant information form to the city each time there's a change of the tenant at the property. These forms are used for multiple purposes, including maintaining a list of properties that are non-owner occupied, ensuring that properties are occupied in compliance with the zoning code, ensuring that the tax department is aware of those residing in Oakwood who may have filings or other income tax obligations, and finally, providing local contact information that can be useful when addressing code enforcement and other public safety issues. This ordinance was written to clarify the four pieces of information needed to accomplish these purposes, which are as follows: the name of each tenant, the relationship of the tenants to each other, the date that occupancy commenced, and an emergency contact telephone number. It also amends the ordinance to require that forms be submitted within fifteen days after a change of tenancy. I would, at this time, since this is the second reading of this ordinance, I would move that council adopt it this evening.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any questions or comments for Vice Mayor Byington? Hearing none, Lori, would you please call a roll?
Mayor Duncan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton.
Yes.
Mr. Epley.
Thank you, and next on our agenda, Councilmember Stevens has an ordinance he would like to introduce.
Thank you, sir. An ordinance to approve current replacement pages to the Oakwood Traffic and General Offenses Codes. Each year, we pass an annual housekeeping ordinance to align our local traffic and criminal ordinances with changes that have been made at the state level. This ordinance will adopt our two thousand and eighteen replacement pages for the traffic code and the general offenses code, and it is being presented as an emergency ordinance so the updates can be incorporated into the codes before the beginning of two thousand and nineteen. Therefore, I move the council adopt this as an emergency ordinance for the reasons stated in the ordinance.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions for Councilmember Stevens? Since this is an emergency ordinance, it would require a four-fifths vote, hearing no other comments, Lori, would you please call a roll?
Mayor Duncan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton.
Yes.
Mr. Epley.
Yes.
And I have now lost my agenda. Let's see here. Here it is?
I'm up.
Yes, okay, Vice Mayor Byington, the floor is yours.
Put the glasses on, because there's a lot of numbers here.
Yes.
This is a ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures for the city of Oakwood, state of Ohio, during fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. Basically, this is our annual budget ordinance, which appropriates the city's funding for two thousand and nineteen. It's required under Section six point zero five of the city charter, and when adopted, provides formal authorization to the city manager to spend public dollars in providing city services. Our total city budget is divided into four pri, or five primary parts, with budgeted spending in each as follows. Our general city services, which amount to thirteen million, one hundred and eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars. Our refuse, which is one million, five hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars. Our water utilities, which are one million, four hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and two dollars. The sanitary sewer utility, which is one million, five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars, and the stormwater utility, which is three hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars. The city manager and finance director will now make a presentation of the budget.
Okay, are you presenting that down front?
Yes.
Mayor and members of council, I'm about to present to you our annual budget presentation here, and Cindy's going to join me up here again, as she did last year. I'll basically run through a PowerPoint and then be happy, between the two of us, to answer any questions that you might have. So, let me jump right into it, and I'll start by telling you that for the two thousand and nineteen budget, we are proposing, as you see on the slide here, a balanced budget, and I'm very happy to report to you tonight that this is the first year since the loss of the estate tax in two thousand and thirteen that we've been able to present a balanced budget, and that's very significant. Back in the days with the estate tax, as you know, we had a line item in the budget on the revenue side for that revenue, and it varied very dramatically from year to year, it was very unpredictable, and quite frankly, we could have put any number in that revenue slot in a given year to make the bottom line read whatever we wanted it to read, again, because that was a very, very unpredictable number, and fortunately for our community, in the roughly ten to fifteen years before that tax was eliminated, we received significant amounts of money, and for the most part, those dollars allowed us to address major facility needs for the Public Works Center and here at the Public Safety City Administration Building. But again, when we lost that money in two thousand and thirteen, effectively, that entire line item, which represented about twenty percent of our total revenue, disappeared, and we then had to work on how to cut spending and find other ways to generate revenue to be able to continue to provide the services that we provide here in Oakwood, and we've been able to do that, and as I'll mention here again in a moment, you know, the final action taken was the ten percent reduction in the credit we give for the earnings tax or the municipal income tax here in Oakwood, and that, again, allows us to present tonight a balanced budget for two thousand and nineteen. This slide you see before you now is one that I show the budget committee, Skip will recognize this for sure, at most of our meetings annually, and it's a look back ten years at, in the foreground, our actual spending, in the background, the blue bars, the budgeted spending. As you know, we always spend a little bit less than what's budgeted, that's required, but interestingly, if you look at this, you can clearly see the decrease in spending from two thousand and eight all the way through two thousand and fourteen, and then it started to tick up a little bit, but the budgeted spending for two thousand and nineteen, interestingly, this wasn't pre-planned, but it matches the budgeted spending way back in two thousand and eight. So, I think anyone looking at this bar chart here can see the cost controls that we have had in place here in our city. So, briefly reviewing our major revenue sources, this is a line graph showing our income tax, looking back twenty years, and you can see there's steady growth for the most part. You know, this annual revenue source here is impacted in three different ways, one by the economy, you know, when you look at the total earned income in Oakwood, as that goes up or down, these numbers can go up or down. Secondly, it's impacted by the tax rates of municipalities in which our Oakwood residents work, and as you're aware, because previously, we had given a hundred percent credit for taxes paid to the jurisdiction in which you work, whenever a local jurisdiction around Oakwood raised their rates, we lost revenue. And then the third way it can be affected is by the city of Oakwood itself raising the rate, and we're currently at twenty, two point five percent, which we've been since nineteen ninety, nineteen eighty-four, and we're still at that rate, and so have not made any change there, so. But this, if you look at the far right, you see the two point two, or seven point two five million estimated receipts for two thousand and eighteen, and we have six hundred thousand added to that, or up to seven point eight five for two thousand and nineteen, and that's a reflection of that ten percent reduction factor applied to taxes paid to other local communities. On the property tax, this is, again, a look back twenty years, and this is affected in just two different ways, one by the overall value of the property in Oakwood, and if you look at the years between nineteen ninety-eight and two thousand and eight, there's a very gradual increase there, that's a function of the value of the total Oakwood property rising, and then the more dramatic changes you see in two thousand and nine and two thousand and fourteen, those are the result of either elimination of a property tax or the addition of one. Obviously, in two thousand and eight, we eliminated one that brought in money to the city, in two thousand and thirteen, our voters approved a property tax issue, and that resulted in the increase there. Of our total revenue source for the general city services, everything but refuse water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater, the income tax is by far the most important, and that represents about sixty percent of the total revenue we need to provide those services. This is an interesting pie chart, which I know you've seen before, but it shows the impact of state law here in Ohio that says that municipal taxes must be paid at the tax rate of the jurisdiction in which a person works, and so, at present, where we have quite a number of Oakwood residents that work either in the city of Dayton or the city of Moraine, which both have the same two and a half percent tax rate as Oakwood does, why that entire two and a half percent those folks pay, Oakwood residents pay, goes to those other two communities, to Dayton and Moraine. And the cumulative effect of that and other communities in which our residents work is what you see here, and that is that of the total municipal tax paid by Oakwood residents, a full fifty-five percent leaves our community, goes to other jurisdictions in the region. And this helps to explain why that ten percent reduction factor was necessary. And you've also seen this pie chart in the past, and this shows the distribution of our property tax, and while the income tax is the primary source of revenue for city services, the property tax is the primary source of revenue for our wonderful Oakwood schools, and that's reflected here in that nearly seventy percent of the total property tax bill paid in Oakwood goes to our Oakwood schools. The second biggest portion there is human services, that's a county-wide program, actually two different voted levies, and that's nearly fourteen percent, and then at eight and a half percent, that's the share of the total property tax paid in Oakwood that comes to the city for city services. Now, moving to the two thousand and nineteen budget, in the front end of the budget book, I have a budget message each year, and it's four or five pages of text, and within that message, I convey to council and to the community kind of the highlights of the budget itself, and I have a few slides here that I just want to run through to give you the key points that will be in that budget message. So, as the vice mayor read earlier, these are the dollar amounts for the five different sections of our budget, and again, the general city services covers police fire, EMS, parks and recreation, street maintenance, basically everything we do except refuse, water, sewer, and stormwater. And as you can see there by those numbers, that's the, obviously, the largest part of our total budget. I mentioned the ten percent income tax credit factor, that's an important component. We are proposing a three dollar per month increase in our refuse fees, and that'll bring in about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars annually into our refuse fund, and I'll explain in a few moments why that's important. The two thousand and nineteen budget has no increases proposed for water, sewer, or stormwater, so we'll keep those as they are in two thousand and eighteen, and then you can see there the years in which we last raised our income taxes, property taxes, and the rest of the utility fees. For two thousand and nineteen, we are proposing to continue to provide the same comprehensive services that we have historically provided here in Oakwood, so there'd be no change in that. We're going to begin two thousand and nineteen with nearly ten million in our general services funds, and that's a very good starting balance for that operation. That represents roughly ten months' worth of operating costs, which is a very good place to start for us. And as I mentioned earlier, this is a balanced budget, we're anticipating, for budgeting purposes, to end the year with almost fifty thousand more in revenue than what we'll spend, again, for two thousand and nineteen. As I mentioned earlier, we have income tax revenue at seven point eight five million, sixty percent of our total revenue, and the seven point two five was the two thousand and eighteen number, eight and a half percent property taxes, then we have about one point two million planned in capital spending for the general city services operations, and about sixty percent of that is for streets and sidewalks, both asphalt and concrete, and our typical annual concrete sidewalk curb and apron program, so it's the basic infrastructure. For the refuse operation, we'll start with a little over half a million, which is a good place to start for that. We have quite a bit of spending in refuse for two thousand and nineteen, it's just capital equipment, and that's in large part why we're proposing to raise the rates by three dollars a month. The water utility's starting the year with about one point, almost one point two million. We like to start the water and sanitary sewer with about a million each year if we can, so we're in a good position there. so we're in a good, good position there. We continue to operate our water system in compliance with all the EPA regulations and we have very low water rates comparatively. We do a survey each year and there are 66 different jurisdictions in the greater Miami Valley region that are that participate in the survey and we're currently sitting at the seventh lowest rates for water. Nearly 300,000 in capital expenses, which is a little bit more than normal for 2019. It's a typo there, it's 2019. And we last raised our water rates January 1 of 2017 and we might talk to the Budget Committee next fall about some some increases or hopefully we can defer that until the fall of 2020. Sewer utility, as I mentioned, we like to start above a million and we're just at that point. Have a modest investment in capital for 2019 and $50,000. And we last raised our rates for sanitary sewer this past January, so we won't need to talk about sewer rates for at least two more years, hopefully three more years. And we're currently sitting at 47th in the in the survey and I guess it's important to point out that depending on capital expenses in a given year, 60 to 70% of our total expenses in the sanitary sewer utility are charges that we pay to Montgomery County and to the city of Dayton for the treatment of our wastewater. So in other words, it's it's an outside expense that we have no direct control over. And then finally, for the stormwater utility, we're starting the year a little shy of 300,000, which is a good place. We have no capital expenses. I'll touch back on that here a little bit later. And the $7 per month fee that began on January 1 of 2017 remains in place and we won't need to talk about making any change to that for at least one or two more years. So looking very quickly here at a at a five-year history of balances, this is for the general city services accounts and you can see where we are right now. We are dropping a little bit this year and that's primarily a result of the city of Dayton voters increasing their rate to 2.5% for income tax. That all by itself took over $300,000 out of our our receipts, money that then went to the city of Dayton. But with the 10% reduction factor, you can see we we flipped that around a little bit and we can present that balanced budget. The refuse fund, you know, this shows kind of a decrease in that and and it's a function of of holding our refuse rates unchanged for a three-year period and the capital needs that are are before us now for equipment. And this also kind of shows to you the importance of that $3 per month increase in fees. Just as an aside, the, you know, going to $30 a month, if you if you look at the our nearest community here that provides an option for a backdoor collection, which would be the city of Kettering through a private contractor, currently here in 2018, if you selected that backdoor pickup, you'd be paying almost 31 bucks a month. So even at 30, we're a little bit lower than what the private hauler would charge Kettering This looks at the water fund and you can see the the history of dropping a bit and then we raised the rates and that obviously turned that around a little bit. And then the sewer fund, likewise, we we dropped a bit, again, primarily because of the county and the city of Dayton. The county raised their rates by 14% this past year, which was a big reason with the Budget Committee and all that we decided to raise the rates of this past January. And this is the stormwater funds. And again, as I mentioned earlier, this starting balance is is a good place to start for this and it's a small utility, but it's an important utility that really allows us to address all the needs of of stormwater mitigation throughout the community. And I'll just end my my comments tonight with a couple good news stories, I guess, with equipment. I know you've heard these before and and I just want to share these. If you look at the the most expensive pieces of equipment that we purchased for the city of Oakwood, why the 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 most expensive are the fire trucks and the sewer vactor truck. Both of those are in the 300 to $350,000 per per vehicle range. Just below that, you have the refuse packer, you have the street sweeper and you have the the medic vehicles or the ambulances. And they're in the 250, 275 per vehicle range. And just in the last couple of years, our mechanics in the Public Works Department have been able to extend the life of a couple of our more expensive pieces of equipment by replacing the the body of the the back half of the units. And and here in in Ohio with the weather that we have and the small community size that we have, the the really wear and tear we see most on these, both the street sweeper and the packer you see before you here is for that back unit and it's not so much for the engine and the chassis and the drivetrain and that sort of thing. So we've been able to find a new body that we our mechanics then had the skills to put onto the existing cabin chassis. In this particular case, we effectively have a 2000 model year cabin chassis with a newer but used body on it, which altogether, including all the 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 work and the painting and and what have you, we spent about $60,000 to do this and we expect to get at least five or six additional years of life out of this piece of equipment, you know, delaying the expenditure of 200-plus thousand for a new packer. So that's that's one story. And the second is a street sweeper and I know Skip has heard this story as well. We likewise had found that the the back end of the of the street sweeper, the the hopper itself, the conveyor system is what rusts out here in this this part of the country. And earlier this year, we found this particular unit, which we purchased from a small city in Texas where there's no snow, there's no salt, et cetera, for a couple thousand dollars. And we spent two or $3,000 to have it shipped up here to 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 Oakwood. And, you know, with a total of $15,000 investment, we have this street sweeper now, which we expect will last, again, at least five or six more years. So just creative ways of taking advantage of the very talented mechanics that we have and extending the life of some of our most expensive pieces of equipment. That in a nutshell is our our budget presentation for the year and be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for our city manager or our finance director?
The capital expenses in those funds, it's mainly vehicles, isn't that right?
In the in the refuse.
Yeah, the refuse, they're vehicles that we've looked at, it's just time.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. We've like extended the years on those as well.
Yes. Yeah, the we so of the 220,000 in the refuse, we're going to, we're proposing to buy two new scooters, which of course they get year-round use. We bought two in the last three years, none this year, but one last year, one the year before, but you have to look back six or eight years, you know, before we had, back to when we bought another one of those. Then we have a new dump truck with with the container on the back that's used daily for the all the yard debris collection we do. That's a, you know, that's a part of the of the refuse fee, all the green waste pickup that we do in disposal and, you know, if you think about, we're just coming off the leaf season now and, you know, if you think about just your own property and the the amount of leaves generated, if you multiply that by 3,600, you know, properties in Oakwood, it's an enormous amount of material that we have to collect up at the street and, you know, we take down to the yard and then we, you know, have it processed and mulch some of it and have the rest of it hauled off. So it's a big operation.
I drove by there Sunday and it's at least 25 feet tall and there's a sign on it called Mount Perkins in honor of our foreman. So I don't know what the status of lowering that mountain is going to be.
Well, that was put up there somewhat tongue-in-cheek by
Yes.
one of Ken Perkins' colleagues.
I understand.
Our street foreman and we've had a bit of a challenge this fall with the private hauler that comes in and removes that debris. They've had equipment breakdowns and what have you, but they have assured us that that entire pile, all all three piles, the the big new pile from the ice storm, which was of course very unexpected, the leaf pile, and then there's a third pile of ground material that was basically brush and branch stuff that we had collected up, you know, between probably May and April, May and and September, that all that will be gone by Christmas. So they've hired a second company to come in beginning, in fact, next Monday, the 17th. And so next week, there'll be a lot of activity down there. So Mount Perkins should be removed.
I thought, I'm sure, I'm sure he didn't like the sign, but I thought it was great.
Other questions for the city manager? All right.
I guess I'd like to just end by thanking our finance director, Cindy. You know, we recognize Cindy for the the perfect audit reports and the Audit of State Award and, you know, she and her staff just do a fantastic job and make my life a lot easier than it otherwise could be by the the diligence in which they, on a daily basis, manage our our finances, income, receipts and and expenses.
Well, I I know, I I would echo that. I know that former Mayor Cook is here in the audience and when I was the the chair of the Finance Committee before Cindy arrived, I would always find Excel formula errors and that was that was my cause for being. But since you've been here, I haven't had to do that anymore and I don't miss it one bit.
So I think turn it back over to you, Steve.
Oh, yes. And and thank you very much for all your hard work on on the budget. One of the other things that we are very blessed with here in in Oakwood is to have a citizen budget review committee that includes 35 members and is equally represented by residents from each of our seven voting districts. That committee meets four times a a year and they've done that this year and endorsed the 2019 budget. Committee chairs Dave Dickerson and Vice Chair Bill Frappwell are here this evening and they've asked to make a few comments regarding the budget and the review that the citizen group did this year.
Good evening, Mayor Duncan, city council members. As co-chairs of the Budget Review Committee, Bill and I appreciate the opportunity of to address the council on behalf of the Budget Review Committee, our 30-plus-person committee making up Oakland citizens representing each of the seven precincts. The committee's role is to advise staff and council on city financial matters and to communicate the viewpoint of Oakwood residents regarding the extent of public services, our residents' desire and their willingness to pay the associated cost. Key to the committee is that the members provide not only their opinion, but also the opinions of Oakwood residents. This year, as in the past, the committee has been actively engaged in discussions with our city leaders to cut costs and find new sources of revenue so we could continue to receive the finest city services. The committee was very pleased to see city staff propose a balanced budget for 2019. In regard to the proposed 2019 budget, the committee met four times this year to receive detailed briefings on financial matters and to provide feedback to council and our city leaders. We believe that the budget proposal before you tonight is a responsible one and will meet the needs of our community. Therefore, the committee fully endorses the budget and recommends the city council that the 2019 budget be approved tonight. Further, we recognize the capital equipment needs in our city refuse department. Our committee also supports the $3 per month increase in residential unit refuse rate that'll be discussed here shortly. On behalf of the Budget Review Committee, we appreciate the opportunity to serve the 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 community and we welcome any questions you may have.
Questions for Mr. Dickerson or Mr. Frappwell?
I would like to thank you for your service, long, long service on the Budget Review Committee and also acknowledge that in addition to that community service, they were recently recognized in the Dayton Business Journal, both of them as under the list of who's who in Dayton Real Estate. Congratulations on that honor as well. It's always good to have community leaders here that want to give back to their time, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Bill, do you have something you'd like to add?
I just want to say one quick thing. I want to thank Mr. Ordeman for his long years of coming to these meetings. I find you to be smart, loyal, and you have a lot of common sense. So continuing to come to the area. Maybe your wife doesn't believe that. One last thing, I hope you all don't feel like you're in Groundhog Day movie where Dave and I come every year and tell you this. I really sincerely believe that Norbert and Cindy and the other folks here do a great job. They work hard to figure out what you want to spend money on, on what projects can be pushed off for a little bit and to find things like to get the garbage truck rebuilt. So I think the the committee members are very appreciative of all their efforts for continuing to to run the city, I think, in a very good way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And while Bill is here, I would also like to point out that Bill Frappwell recently received the Oakwood Rotary Civic Leadership Award for all of your efforts, along with Ken Perkins, for whom Mount Perkins is named after. And both of them and both of both of them obviously do yeoman's work on behalf of our city and we want to congratulate both of them as well. So it's back to you, Steve.
Yes. I think I lost my place here. Yes. Well, with those comments, I'd make the motion that under Section 3.04 of the city charter that that we approve this ordinance and that it would take effect upon passage. I move that council waive a second reading and adopt it tonight.
Do I have a second? Any other discussion for Vice Mayor Byington? Hearing none. Laurie, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, Councilmember Epley has an ordinance he would like to introduce.
Thank you, Your Honor. An ordinance to amend Appendix A of the Streets and Public Services Code of the City of Oakwood, Ohio. This is an ordinance to update Appendix A, which is the public services rate sheet, by increasing city refuse collection rates from $27 to $30 per month per residential unit. When the Ohio State tax was eliminated in 2013, the city of Oakwood lost about 20 of its, 20% of its average annual revenue. This forced several changes in Oakwood, including the decision to end our practice of subsidizing the refuse collection program with general fund tax dollars. We restructured the program so that 100% of the cost is now paid by user fees. In addition to our weekly backdoor household trash and recycling collection and disposal of about 3,200 residential properties, the refuse fees pays for the other services provided through our comprehensive refuse program, including special pickups for disposal of large household items, fall leaf pickup and conversion of leaves to yard mulch and made available to our Oakwood citizens each spring, the refuse dumpster program for efficient disposal of remodeling debris from do-it-yourself projects and other household and yard items, containers to self-dump yard debris and recyclables at a 24/7 drop-off location in the Krieger Field parking lot, monthly self-dumping options for residents to dispose of large household items and of debris at the Public Works Yard. The fee also pays for the year-round collection and disposal of yard debris throughout Oakwood. Given the enormous number of trees and other plant material in Oakwood, this is a very large task with significant labor and capital equipment costs. We last raised refuge rates three years ago. This $3 per month rate increase is necessary to address capital equipment needs over the next few years. The equipment is needed in order to continue providing top-quality refuse services. This is the first reading of this ordinance. I make no motion at this time.
Thank you. We will address that at our January meeting. Next, we have Vice Mayor Byington, who has yet another ordinance related to our budget.
Yes, this is an ordinance to establish an amendment to the organization and staffing schedule for the purpose of creating the classification of part-time city grounds maintenance and then for eliminating the temporary laborer classification and also for authorizing the city manager to fill certain temporary seasonal positions and to declare this ordinance an emergency. This is the first reading of an ordinance to update our organization and staffing schedule so that it reflects the city's current staffing needs. The updated schedule includes the following changes. It creates a part-time city grounds maintenance classification, it eliminates the temporary laborers classification, and it authorizes the city manager to fill certain temporary seasonal positions. This amendment to the organization and staffing schedule does not add any additional employees to the city staff and I move that council adopt this ordinance tonight as an emergency measure so that everything can be in place for January.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions for Vice Mayor Byington?
Any questions for Vice Mayor Byington? Hearing none, Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Byington has yet another ordinance.
Yes, this is to repeal ordinance number forty-eight fifty-three and to establish an amended personnel schedule dated December tenth, two thousand and eighteen, and also declare this an emergency. This ordinance is to update our city's personnel schedule. It accomplishes two things. It adopts a, a two-point-nine-five percent wage increase for the city's non-bargaining unit employees, consistent with wage increases that were established for the members of the city's four bargaining units, and adjusts the position classification titles and related language to ensure consistency with the terminology used in the city's organization and staffing schedule. This ordinance is being introduced as an emergency measure to ensure that it takes effect as of the pay period beginning December twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen. As such, the motion I would make is to council to adopt this ordinance tonight as an emergency measure for the reasons stated in the ordinance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion for Vice Mayor Byington? Hearing none, Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
And I believe you have one more ordinance.
I think so, yeah, and this is to set the maximum compensation of the Oakwood Municipal Court clerk, deputy clerk of courts, and bailiff, and also to declare it an emergency because of the time of year. By law, the Oakwood Municipal Judge determines the actual salary for each court employee, but the Oakwood City Council is responsible for setting the maximum amount to be paid for each job classification within the court. This ordinance will increase the maximum compensation for all court employee job classifications by the two-point-nine-five percent consistent with the wage increases given to office and management staff and to the members of the city's four collective bargaining units. I move that council adopt this as an emergency ordinance so that pay increases will be effective consistent with the timing of pay increases being given to the other office and management staff.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, Lori, please call the roll.
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
And now I believe Mr. Councilmember Stevens has an ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor Duncan. This is an ordinance to amend existing section five oh five point oh one Pets at Large of the Oakwood General Offenses Code to require dogs to be leashed when off the owner's premises to clarify the exception for service animals to exempt the dog park at Krieger Field and to amend the penalties for violations. This is the first reading of an ordinance to require dogs to be kept on leashes when off of the owner's property. Our existing ordinance, which mirrors state law, requires dogs to be under, quote, reasonable control, but does not require a leash. The ordinance I am introducing will require dogs to be securely leashed and under reasonable control, and also makes changes to clarify the service animal exception and to create an exemption for the dog park at Krieger Field. This ordinance will have its second reading at our January meeting. Chief Hill will make a presentation at that meeting as to the need for these changes. This is the first reading of the ordinance, so I make no motion at this time.
Thank you, and our January meeting will be on January seventh this year of two thousand and nineteen. And you have the final ordinance of the evening, correct, Mr. Stevens?
Yes, last one. An ordinance to adopt new section three seven five point oh nine low-speed vehicles, underspeed vehicles, utility vehicles, and mini trucks of the Oakwood Traffic Code. This is the first reading of an ordinance to allow golf carts and similar unconventional vehicles to be operated on Oakwood streets. State law allows these vehicles to be used on streets that have speed limits up to thirty-five miles per hour, but only with the approval of the local jurisdiction. Local jurisdictions that authorize the use of these vehicles are permitted to impose stricter requirements than those set forth in state law. Council is aware that some Oakwood residents have golf carts they would like to use on our public streets. This ordinance will have its second reading at our January meeting, at which time the law director will make a presentation as to the state of the law concerning these vehicles. Once again, this is the first reading of this ordinance, so I make no motion at this time.
Thank you. So, January seventh will be an interesting meeting. That concludes the legislation this evening, and we have no staff report, having received an outstanding budget presentation by the city manager, so I will go straight to the city manager report.
I have nothing else, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for our city manager? Not even the Golden Knights, what was that final score?
Okay. I wore my class ring, so if anybody didn't see the Army-Navy game last Saturday, you missed the best football game of the year. And I could say that every year, even when Army doesn't win, but, you know, we went through a, I'm losing my memory on it now. It was thirteen or fourteen years in a row of losing to, to Navy. And two years ago, I attended the game, and I hadn't been present, you know, at a game in probably twenty years, and that was the game when we turned it around and we defeated Navy. And then last year, we beat them again, and two days ago, we beat them for the third time in a row, and...
So, you're taking credit now.
It was glorious, and I think I might try to go next year and hopefully do it for four years in a row, but in all seriousness, I, I will add that in the four years I was there, nineteen eighty to eighty-four, we lost three of the four years, and we tied Navy one year. And we called that tie a victory because of the, the previous losses, but in all seriousness, it's a, it's a big, 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 big deal, and we compete like heck on the field, but as soon as the game is over, as I think you know, if you ever watched the game, it's, we're one team, and it's just a special thing and a great, a lot of good memories for me, so go Army.
And I'm certain that Congressman Butler, a Navy graduate, you made sure that he heard about the final score?
Well, I, yeah, and I, I hope he attends Rotary this coming Friday morning. He and Rick, Rick DiPrado, who's also Rotarian, Rick's a Navy grad as well, so, thank you. Glad you brought that up.
Thank you. Do, okay, so we have any council comments? Councilmember Epley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have no comments tonight.
Councilmember Hilton?
No comments, Your Honor.
Councilmember Stevens?
I just want to quickly recognize and thank our public works department for all the work that they, they do. I've mentioned this in the past, that with my job being local and I'm driving around looking at properties a lot, I'm out during the day a lot and I see them working, and, you know, for them to, to put in the time and the weather we've had recently with this ice storm, and, and trust me, as an insurance agent, I noticed the ice storm, all the debris that came down, and on top of it, all the leaves came down at the same time. They are working really hard, and for them to work efficiently as they do and to work as hard as they do, I'd just like to thank them for that and recognize them for their hard work. And finally, I, I can't believe two weeks from tomorrow is Christmas, but I just want to wish all the Oakwood families, all Oakwood residents, happy holidays and enjoy it with your families.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yeah, I will echo your comments about the public safety and, and our maintenance crews doing a fine job of handling all the different situations that occurred during the ice storm as well as stuff afterwards. I would also like to thank just council and city staff. I watch a lot of news, I like, I watch a lot about what's going on at the federal level, at the state level, and people just not being able to talk with each other as human beings, as civil human beings. So, at the end of the year, I'm always just very thankful for the group that we have here, the discussions that we have, the things that we accomplish in our city. We do it in a very civil manner. We don't always agree on things, but we talk it through. We get counsel from staff, we get counsel from folks in the community, whether it be through our budget review committee and all the various different committees that we have. But everybody is very respectful. That's a word that I use a lot when I refer to not only the city, but the group that I, I have the privilege of serving on, so I just wanted to thank you all for that and wish everybody a very happy holiday season.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Byington. This weekend, we're, there were two really nice events in Oakwood. On Saturday, the Oakwood Historical Society had a home tour, seven, you know, lovely homes in Oakwood. One was on Chaunce, three were on Volusia, two were on Oakwood Avenue, and then the final stop was on Southview. And all of these people were so excited to open up their homes, and you see the different architectural styles and what they've done to the inside of these old homes, and I was, I got the opportunity to do that. It was a two-point-two-mile walking tour. I chose to drive, but it was cold on Saturday. And then I did want Linda Pearson, who's on the Oakwood Historical Society board, her husband abandoned her halfway through, so I, I drove her around for the rest of the tour. But then Sunday, you know, we had, we had our holiday tree lighting and the luminaries, and, you know, the weather was, was perfect for that event, and Carol indicated that we put out over twenty-five-hundred luminaries, I believe. We got assistance, you know, from the environmental committee as well as the Oakwood Rotary in putting that together. And then this morning, I saw the city staff out picking, picking up bags one by one, and so Santa Claus arrived by fire, fire truck, and it was, it was a great event, and so...
The tree being donated?
Oh, yes, and, and if you, if you get a chance, go over to Schaefer Park and see this tree donated by one of our Oakwood residents who lives on Aberdeen. It's a beautiful tree. His name again, do you recall?
Baybrook.
Baybrook?
Baybrook.
Yeah, at three twelve Aberdeen, they donated the, the tree, and so it's, it's lovely.
Yes.
And then just to, you know, throw a little bit of cold water on the event, if you recall, two months ago, I think it was Congress, or Representative Butler was here and talking about what happens in Columbus during the lame duck session, and he's very frustrated with that process. Today, we got an email alert from the Ohio Municipal League talking about putting another amendment to a bill protecting Lake Erie called a SERP. And a SERP, if you recall, stands for a Supplemental Executive Retirement Plan. I went back in my notes and looked at, it was back in two thousand and thirteen when we were fighting over House Bill Five, and we had already lost the estate tax battle. I went to, to the Ohio Senate and testified because they were wanting to basically exempt a SERP from municipal income tax. A SERP is used by high-income executives primarily in the public sector, but also in large not-for-profit organizations as a way to give them additional compensation. It's reported on a W-2, just like a wage that every one of us gets, every one of our police officers get, our firefighters, our public works people. They want to exempt this wage from municipal income taxation, and they are trying to sneak it in at the eleventh hour again. We're, we don't know the language, we haven't even seen the wording. Their intent is to put something, have a hearing tomorrow morning, and then, I think, then Wednesday afternoon, and try to run this through in the dead of night. We will fight them again. It's violating the one-subject rule, which we've already taken them to, to the court and, and won. We'll, we'll, we'll fight back again, but it's another effort of the General Assembly to starve municipal revenue, municipal governments of their revenue sources. So, I haven't, I'm having a pretty hard time how some, some high-paid executive can get a million-dollar deferred compensation plan and not have to pay a one dime of city income taxes. So, I'm hopeful that this thing dies a, an unnatural death, but we'll just have to watch them, and they'll be back in January, so hold on to your wallets if you're in favor of municipal government. Okay, I'm sorry, I meant to say if I, I forget which hat I wear sometimes, but yes, these are private-sector people trying to not pay city taxes on their retirement plans. And they're not really retirement plans, they're deferred compensation plans, wages.
Yes.
So, with that, our next meeting is going to be on January seventh, two thousand and nineteen. If council will oblige me, and if you can stay here for about ninety seconds, we have a organization meeting for our Community Improvement Corporation, so the city council meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming, and again, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. And can I have a, a motion to approve the minutes of our December eleventh, two thousand and seventeen meeting, council?